values of life, align our efforts in those areas, and on those things upon generations. Let us continue to strive to make a better world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, all right, the clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Thalman.
Here.
Mr. Seidler. Ms. Ketchum.
Here.
Mr. Slavonakis.
Here.
Mr. Thorngate.
Here.
And Mr. Palmer. Formerest president.
Thank you very much. It's time for motion to accept the minutes as received.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. All right, brings us to the mayor's report. Couple of things I wanted to touch on today. Number one is the, um, just my regular PSA that the state of the city is still set for Tuesday, July 25th at noon. It's over at the casino for folks who are worried about the smoke. There is smoke in the main casino, but there's not smoke in this area. So, um, you know, we've had it there for many years. I've never smelled any smoke in this event. So I hope folks can come. Um, if you want to just attend, it's free. If you want to get lunch though, you need to reach out to the city clerk, correct?
Yep.
And, um, uh, reserve your ticket for lunch. It's $15 is the cost for lunch, but lunch is entirely up to you. You're welcome to attend, uh, just for free if you don't want lunch. Uh, wanted, um, just to recap, um, this past weekend, we had a nice concert at West Bank Arena. I really just wanted to give a shout out to, um, executive director Kelly Tucker of the Greater Wheeling Sports Entertainment Authority. She's doing a great job there. Uh, we had just under 3,000 people show up for Whiskey Myers, um, which is not a huge show, but, um, it's according to, I, I talked to Kelly today and she feels that this is the, um, you know, we have to get these small shows filled before we ever get the big shows again. I know people remember the big shows we used to get. It's harder to get those big shows, uh, today because of the way the markets work, but, uh, we need folks to come to the shows we have. It was a great turnout. She said Live Nation was very impressed with the facilities there. And also looking at additional events at the arena and at the Capitol Theater. So good job there and please support your local shows, uh, when they come to town. Also at the arena this coming weekend is the Wheeling Hall of Fame induction ceremony or banquet. Um, I normally have open remarks there. I didn't realize when I was making our vacation plans with my wife that I'm going to miss it this year, but the vice mayor has agreed to fill in for me. So I appreciate that. Uh, his draft speech is down to about 90 minutes now. So, uh, he's going to work on that, get it down to maybe 75 minutes, but, um, I just do want to thank and congratulate all the inductees and their families. Uh, several inductees are still living, uh, folks we all know well. Dr. Bill Mercer was here last council meeting and Joanne Stamp. Uh, one, just on a personal level, uh, someone who I've always, I've become a fan of from just looking at Wheeling history is, um, a gentleman by the name of Edward Bates Francine, who I believe is probably Wheeling's, uh, most appreciated or most, most underappreciated architect. Um, you know, I was nice. I was glad to see him being inducted this year. It's always a great event. So if you can go, it's, it's Saturday night, 6:00 PM at the arena. It's always a nice event. Uh, I did want to just, uh, clarify, um, there were some, I saw some media attention to the issue of the splash pads being on tonight's agenda. I also saw we got a little bit chided by the newspaper on this issue. So I just want to clarify what was, uh, the process here. Um, it is true that, uh, Councilwoman Ketchum scheduled a health and rec committee meeting a couple of weeks ago to talk about a variety of issues. Splash pads was on that, but when I asked for splash pads be on this, on tonight's agenda, I was doing so not as a referral from that committee, but really just as an independent thing that we've talked about for probably going on two years now, uh, with members of staff and amongst herself, uh, uh, taking some of those American Rescue Plan fundings and activating some outdoor spaces. And I would also point out that, um, it was suggested that we weren't following the proper procedure. Uh, the vast, vast majority of council ordinances do not go through any council committee. I think there were 35 proposals on tonight's agenda under original propositions. I don't think any of them went through a committee. Um, so there's really, um, it's nice to have that discussion that, that at the committee level, but it's certainly not required. But in abundance of caution, I'm fine that tonight, which we make a motion to table those ordinances. I maybe have a health and rec committee meeting next week if that's amenable. And I just get this process back in motion. It's probably too late in this year to get anything done for this, uh, season anyway. Um, but I just did want to, I do a clarification on that. Um, there was certainly not any intention to circumvent any process. Last but not least, I did want to mention, um, I just, how great it is to see so many facade grant applications today. Um, that's been one of our more popular programs. It's great to see private proprietors take advantage of this program. Uh, one thing I would like council to think about is, uh, you know, going forward with this program is, um, it's something I noticed a lot is we have, the program has been great to focus on the front portions of buildings that are visible from the street. Uh, we have a lot of buildings across town, mostly downtown, but also in some of the neighborhoods where because of past demolition, the sides of buildings are very unattractive, um, and never really intended to be presented to the outside world because there used to be a building there. So, um, I'd like us to look at maybe extending that facade program a little bit more broadly to look at the sides of buildings as well. And that's something we can certainly talk about maybe to do a development committee going forward. That's all I have on announcements, but we do have some proclamations. If you bear with me, we have, uh, three scheduled tonight. I blame the city clerk, not me for these, but, um, the first is for Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Um, it was going to be for Tate Blanchard, but it'd be, uh, Tricia, is it Painter or Pointer? Okay. Tricia Painter's here. So you bear with me. I'm going to get through all three proclamations and then we'll do some photos with everybody just to save some time. Whereas President Reagan initiated the observance of Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month starting in 1983. And Alzheimer's Brain Awareness Month is observed in June as an opportunity to educate and discuss Alzheimer's disease and other dementias. And whereas every 65 seconds, someone develops Alzheimer's and is the sixth leading cause of death. And whereas 6.7 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's disease, with one in nine individuals, 65 years and older, developing Alzheimer's or, or, or dementias. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association is the world's leading voluntary health organization in Alzheimer's care, support, and research. And whereas 11 million Americans provide unpaid care to those suffering with Alzheimer's disease and other dementias. And whereas the city Wheeling offers its support to those living with Alzheimer's disease, and we also recognize those who care for and provide for them, uh, sharing their loved ones' emotional, physical, and financial strains. Now therefore, I, Glenfellow Jr., mayor of the city Wheeling, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month here in the city Wheeling, and I call upon all of our citizens to learn more about Alzheimer's disease and to support those individuals living with this disease and their caregivers. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the official seal of the city Wheeling to be fixed here to the sixth day of June of 2023. So thank you, Tricia, for that. All right. The second proclamation I have today is for Pride and Wheeling Day. Um, I believe Sarah Clark here from Orem. All right, all right. I see Sarah back there. This is the seventh annual year I, uh, we're doing Pride and Wheeling Day. So congratulations, uh, for that. Um, all right. With proclamation, whereas Orem will hold its seventh annual Pride and Wheeling Day taking place on Friday, June 9th of 2023 from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And whereas Wheeling Park and Recreation Department, the Friendlier City Project, West Banko, Crittenton Services, Wheeling Arts and Culture Commission, and Nami Gre- and Nami Greater Wheeling, uh, have each partnered with Orem for a community beautification event. And whereas the Pride and Wheeling event is a day of volunteerism, uh, filled with the opportunity to raise awareness of LGBTQ plus diversity in the city of Wheeling. And whereas this year's event focuses on the various beautification projects along Wheeling Heritage Trail. And whereas Pride and Wheeling is a strong expression of Orem's core values, and by working together as partners, we can impact, improve, and inspire our community. Uh, now therefore, I, Glenfellow Jr., the city Wheeling, do hereby proclaim, uh, Friday, June 9th of 2023 as Pride and Wheeling Day here in the city, and I encourage all of our citizens to eliminate prejudice and come together to celebrate our city and take pride in our diversity. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the official seal of the city Wheeling to be fixed this too, uh, fixed here to the sixth day of June of 2023. All right. Thank you both. And one more proclamation, if you bear with me here. This is for Juneteenth. Um, and I believe, um, I see Alex Pandas from Wheeling Heritage is here to receive this proclamation. Thank you, Alex, for being here. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth was first celebrated on June 19th, 1865, when Union General Gordon Granger in Gabison, Texas, announced the end of the Civil War and informed enslaved residents of their freedom, more than two years after President Abraham Lincoln had delivered the Emancipation Proclamation promising the same. And whereas historically, Juneteenth has been a day of remembrance and reflection, a time to celebrate African-American history, culture, and contributions while also emphasizing the promises of freedom, of opportunity, and equality for all peoples. And whereas since 2019, Wheeling has formally recognized the Juneteenth holiday with a formal ceremony held at the site of the former slave auction block at 10th and Market Streets, followed by educational and entertainment activities. And whereas since 2021, both the federal government and the state of West Virginia, uh, have each recognized Juneteenth as a holiday. Now therefore, I, Glenfellow Jr., the mayor of the city Wheeling, do hereby proclaim, June 19th of 2023 as Juneteenth Independence Day here in the city, and I encourage all of our residents to take part in the Juneteenth ceremony, in the Juneteenth ceremonies, uh, while striving to be more aware of the significance of this, of this celebration in African-American history, in our nation, and in this community. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the official seal of the city Wheeling to be fixed here too, on the sixth day of June of 2023. I thank you all for bringing with you through those and, uh, folks who I, I mentioned, y'all would come up, we'll get some photos, but thank you all. All right. And that concludes my mayor's report and brings us to the clerk's report.
Hi. There was a notice of application to operate a private club to Clayton and Don McCombs for Flying Spoon LLC located at 8733rd Street. And that concludes the clerk's report.
Thank you very much. Brings us to number two, unfinished business.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $29,974 to Savage Construction Inc. of Wheeling, West Virginia for retaining wall repairs at 17th Street, Wheeling Fire Department Headquarters to be charged to city service fee.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. My understanding is we're going to have to vote by voice tonight, correct? We have issues with the,
Clickers aren't working.
With the clickers. So, all right. It's no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $26,000 with CT Consultants of Mentor, Ohio for professional engineering services for Clayton, 36th Street, and Elm Terrace Playgrounds to be charged to ARPA funds.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? All righty. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, uh, motion passes.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Wheeling to continue no parking zone on the south side of Fifth Street to the driveway entrance.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $79,000 with Catrelle Companies, Inc. of Toronto, Ohio, for 12th Street Archway to be charged to the RCIP.
Move for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, let me just, uh, thank, uh, city staff for working with the contractor to come up with a really great idea here for this sign. Um, Heritage Port for years has been one of our, our, you know, our, um, sort of our highlights downtown, but it's not, it doesn't have any, uh, sort of separate placemaking where, you know, if you're coming down 12th Street, it's easily identifiable for tourists and visitors. I, I've seen this in other places, sort of, uh, signs, uh, placemaking signs that really indicate, bring attention to a particular area. And I think this was, it was one that was particularly fitting, and I want to encourage everyone to vote for this. So thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Will this be 12th or closer back to Water Street? Where on?
Um, the proposed location is as you, um, go on the sidewalk at the end of 12th Street.
Okay.
There's the flagpole.
Yep.
On the other side of the flagpole and where the, the, those bushes were taken out.
Yep.
There's handicap seating. It's, it's right there.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
An addendum to the ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into any and all necessary agreements and expend funds with M&amp;G Architects and Engineers of Wheeling, West Virginia for architectural and engineering services associated with the demolition of the center Wheeling parking garage adjacent to the Valley Professional Building construction of the police headquarters to be charged to 2022 TIF bond.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion passes.
That concludes unfinished business.
All right. Thank you. Brings us, item was held over. We have planning commission minutes, uh, from February 13th, 2023, a hall of fame board minutes from April 11th, 2023, Center Market Commission minutes from April 4th of 2023, Board of Zoning Appeals minutes from April 20th, 2023, EMEA's Commission minutes from April 19th, 2023, and Planning Commission Zone Change Request. Is there a motion to accept these as received?
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Brings us to remarks from members of council. I'll start to my left today, Mr. Thorngate.
Just a question for Mr. Herron. I know Edgington Lane is so close to being done. It looks like the only thing left we have to do are paint the lines on basketball court and tennis court. Do we have a ballpark idea when that will be completed?
Uh, I do not, but I can find out.
Mr. Vice Mayor? All right, Ms. Ketchum?
Um, yes, I do have a couple of things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to congra- uh, congratulate the folks at Appalachian Outreach for opening their, uh, South Wheeling location at 39th and Wood. Uh, a couple of weeks back today, they had their official ribbon cutting, uh, they're an incredible organization doing really important work, not just here in the city of Wheeling, but across, uh, the state of West Virginia. Familiar with the work of Appalachian Outreach, they address, uh, crisis situations, particularly natural disaster crisis situations across the state. When folks need something, um, they make sure that they are able to deliver it, whether it's right here, uh, in the city of Wheeling or across the state. So, um, congratulations to them. And their physical location is a store. So they collect all of these items in preparation for a natural disaster, but in the meantime, uh, it is for sale. So feel free to stop by 39th and Wood, um, uh, there in South Wheeling. Uh, also we, uh, I'll be having Center Market office hours on June 13th, um, in the Center Market Cafe, uh, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Uh, so feel free to stop by and chat about anything, uh, Word 3 or city of Wheeling related. Uh, next, if you, if folks remember, uh, a couple of months back, we approved, um, some funds to conduct a study to address some of the concerns that we have about the development of the Clay School. And, uh, the organization Tipping Point, uh, has released a survey, uh, to kind of gather information from community members in East Wheeling, but really across the city of Wheeling to, uh, determine what kind of use this space could have. I know folks are interested in recreation and housing, um, uh, other opportunities to make a kind of campus situation happen, uh, there in East Wheeling. Uh, that survey is still live, I believe, and, uh, will continue to be live until maybe later this month, June 30th. Okay. Um, and so if you are interested in East Wheeling or in this building, or have any vested interest in what the future of, um, our downtown and East Wheeling neighborhoods, uh, look like, please fill out that survey. It's really, really important. Um, and it's not too difficult, and it has a lot of really great opportunities to not just give you your input, but learn what other people, uh, might be considering valuable, uh, for that community. Uh, and then lastly, we have the Arts Fest coming up on August 5th, and it's the first arts festival that we've had in many years pre-COVID, uh, coming back August 5th. And we're looking for, uh, the Wheeling Arts Commission is looking for vendors. Uh, we've got a couple of great applications now, but if you know of anybody, if you vend yourself and you think it might be a, a great opportunity to be at the Arts Fest, um, feel free to complete an application, um, that's available on, uh, our website, um, at wheelingwv.gov. I believe it's also available on our Facebook, and you can reach out to us at arts@wv.gov. Um, and again, that's August 5th, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM at West Virginia Northern Community College. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slavonakis. All righty. That brings us to report of committees. We have the finance committee minutes from May 16th of 2023.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as received.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is passed. All right. We also have the Health and Recreation Committee minutes, uh, from, from May 12th of 2023.
I'll make a motion to accept as received.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, it is passed. Brings us to Board of City Manager, Mr. Herron.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Um, City Hall will be closed on June 19th, an observation of, uh, Juneteenth, uh, holiday, as well as, uh, June 20th, uh, West Virginia Day. So, uh, Monday and Tuesday of that week, uh, City Hall will be closed, which, as has been discussed, the city council meeting will be moved to, uh, June 21st. Uh, we'd like to schedule the ribbon cutting and open house for the new police headquarters for June 21st, assuming that, you know, trying to get, uh, everybody's schedule in, in order, particularly vacations, have a ribbon cutting at 4:00 PM, uh, prior to the city council meeting. They'll have the, uh, building open, uh, for a public reception between 4:00 and 8:00 PM that afternoon and evening. Um, also, uh, I wanted to provide a brief update on, uh, the status of, uh, ARPA funds at this point. I did not get a chance to go through this with the finance, uh, acting finance director this afternoon, but, so these, uh, figures may be off slightly, but, uh, in the revenue replacement allocation, uh, $900,000 remains. And on the, uh, ARPA eligible projects, and, and this includes, uh, the projects that are on this evening's agenda, uh, is $1,383,378 for a total of $2,266,378.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager?
I just have one question. Um, uh, do we have an update? Or rather, um, I've noticed that the buses at the Overta, um, intermodal have been moved to the back. Um, is that part of the permanent plan or is that a temporary, um, change as a result of the streetscape or a combination of both?
Uh, it's a combination of both. Hopefully it's permanent. Um, the, uh, we met with, uh, streetscape contractors last week who, um, then, uh, coordinated with Overta, which was the plan all along. It's just the timing as, as to when that was going to happen. There's some, uh, temporary shelter, uh, work that needs to be done on Naylor's Way, uh, which, uh, will be done here, uh, probably in the next few weeks, but the goal is to have those buses and that bus, uh, stop permanently between the, the intermodal and, and, uh, West Banko.
Any questions for the city manager? Um, I've just got a couple there, Mr. Herron. Um, first, you just mentioned the finance director, uh, the assistant, um, you know, what, can you update us on, on, in the hiring process for finding a replacement for that position?
Yeah, yes, Mayor. As you know, that is a city council appointment, and I do have a candidate that I'm prepared to recommend for city council to, uh, interview.
Okay. I had two other questions. One was on the Life Hub. Uh, we had a very, um, uh, you know, full discussion, the last council meeting presentation on that, uh, topic. I think there's a lot of questions that, that members of council have from talking to members of council. I think, um, in theory, a lot of us are, are supportive of this project. We just have to get some questions. So I don't know the best format for that, whether we should do this in a council meeting or, or have a special meeting specifically for it, but, uh, I'm open to recommendations for the best way to have that conversation because I, I can see it being a fairly lengthy process and conversation. We may not want to bog down a regular meeting with it, but, uh, but that's something just to be thinking about, uh, going forward. But, but I do commend staff for all the work they put into this project. Last but not least, uh, um, last month, we had a, a development committee meeting where we, we talked about a citywide sidewalk program and staff had agreed, or at least, uh, said they would look into some options, including, um, it was suggested by Councilman Seidler, I believe, um, looking at the Friends of Wheeling program as sort of a model and some other models as well. Uh, should we expect anything, uh, on that coming from staff?
Yes, we're, uh, we are prepared to, uh, to discuss that with council.
Okay. Um, also, um, I think we talked about having an online poll or, or survey to gauge residents' interest in participating in some sort of program. Um, could we include that as well in that discussion? And then I'll leave it, I'll leave it to you to decide the best place. I'd had that conversation, whether the next meeting or perhaps in a development, in a subsequent, uh, development committee meeting would be fine as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? All righty. That brings us to report of other officers. We have the Greater Wheeling Sports Entertainment Authority minutes from April 25th of 2023, Historic Landmark Commission minutes from, uh, May 4th of 2023. Is there any motion to hold those over? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, it's passed. Brings us number seven, petitions for redress for grievance. Number eight, petitions of all other kinds. Assume there are none for each one.
There are none. There are none.
Sorry, I cut you off.
Yep, it's okay, okay.
And number nine, original propositions.
All right, here we go. Okay.
And we have a lot of original propositions tonight.
Yeah, yeah. Try to make it not too painful. All right. An ordinance changing the zoning district classification of parcel 137 on the map of W42. I identified 108 South Huron Street from R3 residential district to C2 general commercial. An ordinance of the council of the city of Wheeling fixing the assessment for the cost of raising a dilapidated structure on real property in the city in accordance with applicable sections of the West Virginia Code and the codified ordinances of the city of Wheeling. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $4,157,865 to the Verco Contracting, Inc. of Charleston, West Virginia, for GCMP road sewer replacement to be charged to Water Pollution Control Bond Fund. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $441,500 to South Oak Contractors of Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, for pedestrian trail bridge painting to be charged to the city service fee. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $50,000 with Wheeling Symphony of Wheeling, West Virginia for city share of fireworks display. $30,000 to be charged to city manager line number 001.4412.202142, and $20,000 charged to the coal severance, which is 022.4412.502263. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $16,500 with Northern Panhandle Conservation District of Mecklenburg, West Virginia for the purchase of fiscal year 2024 operation and maintenance funds for Wheeling Creek structure. $15,000 to be charged to the capital contributions, and, uh, $1,500 to coal severance.
I'll make a motion to consolidate chemicals, number seven through 20.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion is passed.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds on the following to be charged to Water Pollution Control Division. Chemstream of Nitro, West Virginia, in the amount of $21,280 for caustic soda. Uh, S&amp;F Polydine of Ridgeboro, Georgia, in the amount of $253,184 for polymer. JCI Jones Chemical, Inc. of Barbertown, Ohio, in the amount of $109,193,500 for sodium hypochlorate. Salchemical of Weirton, West Virginia, in the amount of $45,750 for sodium bisulfite. And then an ordinance authorizing the directing and directing the city manager to expend funds on the following to be charged to Water Pollution Control Division for Dell Marketing LP in the amount of $15,600 for the purchase of three Autodesk AutoCAD three-year subscriptions. An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds on the following to be charged to water. Carbon Activated Corporation of Mount Hope, West Virginia, in the amount of $62,500 for powdered activated carbon. Carbon Activated Corporation of Mount Hope, West Virginia, in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for powdered activated carbon. Thornton, Musson, and Bellmine of Zachary, Louisiana, in the amount of eighty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for citric acid fifty percent. PBS Technologies of Detroit, Michigan, in the amount of a hundred one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred dollars for ferric chloride. Univar Solutions of Fairfield, Ohio, in the amount of eighteen thousand for hydrofluosilic acid. Shannon Chemical Corporation of Malvern, Pennsylvania, in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars for phosphate liquid corrosion inhibitor. Bonded Chemical of Columbus, Ohio, in the amount of sixty-five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars for potassium. Permanent, I'm gonna say it wrong. Could you help me out, city manager? Per, per magnate, thank you. Chemstream of Nitro, West Virginia, in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred dollars for sodium bisulfate thirty-eight percent. Univar Solutions of Fairfield, Ohio, in the amount of forty-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars for sodium hydroxide twenty-five percent. And JCI Jones Chemicals of Sarasota, Florida, in the amount of a hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred dollars for sodium hypochlorate twelve point five percent.
Before we go on to number twenty-one, a question for our city solicitor. Would it be appropriate to entertain a motion to table the next three items, depending, based on what I said during the mayor's report?
Mayor, it is not necessary. It's, you were exactly correct. The technical question was asked about the Development Committee meeting, but majority of ordinances do not go through, through a a committee, sir, so it's fine that it's on the agenda. It's not necessary to table.
I know it's not necessary too, but I think, I think there's consensus that we would like to table it. So would that be appropriate to do so now?
Absolutely, sir.
All right, is there a motion to table original propositions, number twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion is passed. Thank you.
Resolution for budget revision that, subject to approval of the state auditor's office as required, the Council of the City of Wheeling does hereby direct that the budget be revised prior to the expenditure or obligation of funds for which no appropriation or insufficient appropriation currently exists as shown on Budget Revision BR twenty twenty-three point zero one, point zero four, a copy of which is entered as part of this record.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, it is passed.
I'll make a motion to consolidate readings of facade grants, number twenty-five through thirty-five.
Any discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Resolution of the Council of the City of Wheeling, West Virginia, to authorize, direct, and empower the officers and administrators of the city to execute all necessary documents and procedures to provide for a downtown facade improvement grant for the following. Roger Malone, twenty-two thirty-one Chaplain Street for fifteen thousand. Jeff Johnson, seventy-six fifteenth Street for ten thousand, one hundred and forty. David Capel, MD, twenty-two sixty-five and twenty-two sixty-seven Market Street for fifteen thousand. Edwin Boyd, twenty-two ten Market Street for nine thousand, five hundred. Derek Weisenborn, six thirty-seven Market Street for five thousand, six hundred. Rebecca Regroot, six forty-nine Main Street for six thousand, five hundred and nineteen. Elsa Campetty Vaughn, fifteen Seventh Street for seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight. Fulton Lending LLC for five thirty-eight National Road for eight thousand, eight hundred. Rod Haller, fourteen twenty Market Street for three thousand, four hundred and ten. Trinity Lutheran Church for thirty-five thirty-six Ove Street for fifteen thousand. And Pete Pepper and Gary Ford at six seventeen Fulton Street for eight thousand, five hundred.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolutions.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, it is passed. Thank you.
And that concludes original propositions.
Thank you.